Falls back to order. Item 4.0, Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Caitlin Raymond, a ninth grade student, and Kaylee Silver, a 10th grade student. Both students are from Rosemont High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the microphone.
No, I have the microphone.
She has the microphone.
Kaylee, how do you pronounce your last name?
Silver.
Silver. Kaylee Silver is a sophomore in Rosemont's lead program who has begun debating at Einstein Middle School. Kaylee used to cheer, compete in cheer, but in the ninth grade devoted herself completely to speech and debate. Caitlin Raymond is a freshman in Rosemont's lead program and began debating at Einstein's Middle School with Kaylee. Because of their previous experience together, they make for a great team. Recently, Kaylee and Caitlin took first place out of 30 teams in the junior varsity division at the Santa Clara University Invitational Debate Tournament. Kaylee and Caitlin are two of eight members currently debating for the Rosemont team, coached by Chris Nelson. Also providing coaching and other support for Rosemont's program is Mark Hernandez from the Sacramento Urban Debate League. Mark has helped develop the Rosemont Debate Program this year, and we owe him a great deal for all of his hard work. Kaylee and Caitlin are both incredibly dedicated students who spend countless hours preparing for the debate. Both are capable and speaking at an incredible, wow, incredibly fast rate, not me. Known in this sport as spreading, a highly technical skill required in timed rounds. Both young ladies have been very supportive of the novice team members who had just started debating this year. They have used their leadership skills to help coach teammates, demonstrating their techniques and sharing research methods necessary for their sport of policy debate. This great duo plans to continue mastering their craft and hoping to compete in many tournaments in the future. The Board of Education is proud to recognize Kaylee Silver and Caitlin Raymond as our stellar students.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here. And I have so many thanks yous to go through, but first, I'd like to talk a little bit about debate. So debate has made me who I am. It's my passion, and I've met so many great people like Kaylee and Jaden and Serena, who have changed my life for the better, just in debate, and they've influenced my life, and hopefully I'll pursue debate in the future in politics or in law and things like that. And of course, I'd like to thank Ms. V. Hill, our principal, and Mr. Nelson for coaching us and creating debate, and then Mark and Sacramento Urban Debate League entirely for all they've done for us and helped us go to these tournaments and compete and, of course, have led our successes. And then, of course, I'd like to thank the Board of Education. Thank you so much for this award. It's a really great honor. Thank you.
I would also like to thank all the people that came out today, and especially the Board of Education, for acknowledging us for what we do. We'd like, I'd like to thank all the people that have supported us since middle school and even before that, but I'd especially like to thank all the parents and our principal and our debate coach and our debate teacher. Without them, we really wouldn't be here, and education has always been my main priority, and to be receiving this award is a great honor. Thank you.
Moving on to item five, announcements of actions taken in closed session.
I defer to the superintendent. I have no announcements.
For President Wu, it's indeed my pleasure to be able to announce some appointments that were made tonight. By a vote of five to zero, unanimous, with two of our board members being absent, I want to call them individually and see if you're in attendance, if you would step up to the podium and perhaps make a few comments to our public and to our board. I don't believe that our new chief information officer is here, but I'll read his name out. The new chief information officer for Sacramento City Unified School District is Elliot Lopez. I don't believe he's here. We have two new area superintendents who were selected, and I will call up, the first of those would be Olga Ariano. Olga, you in attendance?
Well, President Darryl Wu and board members, Superintendent Jose Banda, thank you for the opportunity that you have given me to allow me to continue my journey in being that helpful hand in our district. I am very honored to be able to serve at this level. My work is not done. My work only continues, and it is to make all the improvements that are necessary, because at the end of the day, the reason why we're all here is to improve our children's education. And I take that personal, because I'm not just an educator, but I'm also a parent of students here in the Sacramento City Unified School District. So I want to thank you for the opportunity and thank everyone that was involved in this process. It is an emotional time for me, and I'm just very thankful that I'm here serving you, our parents, our students, and alongside some wonderful people that I know that I'm not only going to be embraced, but I'm also going to be mentored to make sure that I do my job and I do it well. I'm not going to let you down. Thank you.
The next area superintendent to be announced is Chad Schweitzer. Chad, can you step up, please?
In an effort not to sound exactly like Olga, I'll just simply start off by saying thank you very much. I'm honored to be here, honored to be a part of this team. Many of you know me, I'm a product of SAC City, having gone to John Cabrillo, Caroline Wenzel, Sam Brannon, and graduating from John F. Kennedy in 1990. So just to show you that this district is proving and producing great students, and hopefully I'm doing well. And we'll continue to do great things for y'all. Thank you very much.
The new principal of Tahoe Elementary School, April Shafto. April, are you here?
I just would like to say thank you to Superintendent Banda and members of the board for having confidence in me and allowing me to continue my journey in education as the principal of Tahoe Elementary. I've been in this district for 13 years. I'm committed to our students, and this is an exciting new part of my education journey. So again, thank you, and also thank you to the parents and teachers who came out to support me today from Tahoe Elementary.
The new principal of New Technology High School, Kenneth Durham Jr., please step up.
Thank you, President Wu, members of the board, Superintendent Banda, and Sacramento City Unified School District community and New Tech community. I'm both extremely humbled and honored to have the opportunity to serve the students of this district and of this community, and I look forward to working with you as partners to make sure I'm doing everything I can to help our kids. Thank you.
The new principal of Kit Carson International Backlaurate Middle School Years and Diploma Program is Santiago Chapa. Is Santiago here?
When I first accepted a principalship in front of a SAC City School Board, it was 2002. My oldest daughter was one-year-old, and she joined me at the podium unexpectedly. Tonight, as we're driving here, I tell her, I share with her my remarks. She said they were boring. And so hopefully, in an effort not to be boring, I'll mention her, Christina, my oldest, along with the rest of my wonderful family back there, here to support me. But more than anything, I want to thank Superintendent Banda, the entire board, for giving me the opportunity to lead Kit Carson on this journey towards IB authorization, towards expansion to a seven-to-12th grade school. It's going to be a wonderful, exciting journey in our future. I'd also like to thank Assistant Superintendent Mary Harden Young. She's been tremendous. Her assistance in the transition has been wonderful. In addition, as interim principal the last couple of months, the staff at Kit Carson, the community, has been extremely supportive, and I'd like to express my gratitude tonight. But more than anything, and most importantly, I'd like to look forward to joining you again in the near future to detail all the successes of current Kit Carson students and future Kit Carson students as we complete our authorization and become an IB school. Again, thank you.
The new principal at John Morris Therapeutics Center, Stephanie Shaughnessy. Please step forward.
Good evening, Board President Wu, board members, and Superintendent Banda. I am so privileged and honored to have been chosen for the principalship at John Morris. This is a very unique school that has very unique needs that are near and dear to me. I am so grateful to be able to serve the students and the families at John Morris, and I want to also thank the team from John Morris that is accompanying me tonight. Thank you so very much.
And finally, the new principal at Arthur A. Benjamin Health Professions High School, Marla Clayton Johnson. Please step forward.
Thank you so much, President Wu and Superintendent Banda and members of the board. Appreciate this honor to continue the service of Health Professions High School's community, the staff and students, our families, and I really appreciate the support that I've received from Sacramento City Unified School District in the 10 years that I've been here. So thank you very much.
President Wu, that concludes all the appointments for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. I think my colleague Vice President Pritchett has a statement to read for us.
Thank you, President Wu. And just right before we move in, acknowledgement to the folks that just came up to say thank you for the position. I just wanted to say this, that I hear in your hearts the deep sense of humility with which you have said, "Thank you for the opportunity," but I just wanted to say to you that in acknowledging that humility, I also want you to embrace a deep sense of pride and excellence, because it is in you that we are entrusting the leadership position of not only other teachers, but leaders, but also the welfare and academic excellence of our students. So see us as partners and look forward to keep on working with you. Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption, with the exception of technical problems, on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Today's meeting will air Sunday, April 26 at 9:00 a.m., Monday, April 27 at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Members of the audience wishing to address the board should fill out a speaker identification form located in the back of the community room and give it to Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Ross, prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Responses to questions by public will be posted on the district's website prior to the next board meeting. Please limit comments during public comment to items not listed on the agenda. If you are found to be commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you will be asked to defer your item until the item comes up on the agenda. Please turn off all cell phones or place them in the silent or vibrant mode.
Thank you, Vice President Pritchett. Moving on to item 6.0, agenda adoption. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a motion by Vice President Pritchett. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have two seconds, in case somebody didn't hear that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 7.0, public comment. Mr. Ross.
President Wu, we have seven comments on item 7.0. I'll read the first four names. If people can please line up behind the microphone in the order you're called. Evian Acosta, Xavier Ortiz, Yuen Turn, Angela Sarte.
My name is Xavier Ortiz. There is a great movement happening across California trying to make ethnic studies a requirement in high schools. I'm a part of a large community of students, teachers, and parents who wants to see this in our district. In the next month, many community members will show their support for the Student Advisory Council Initiative, asking for ethnic studies to be implemented as a high school graduation requirement. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to share my thoughts on the importance of making ethnic studies a high school graduation requirement. I took ethnic studies leadership class in my eighth-grade year at Rosa Parks Middle School. I find this class very important to all students, because it gives them a different way of thinking, as in how their ancestors came about and why is it important for people to know their history. The class helped to build my self-esteem due to having some sense of my ancestors and where I come from. It makes students aware of their actions and how their actions affect their people and all communities. By taking this class, it will not only do the minorities a favor, but the education system as well. Research shows that it can help close achievement gaps, reduce dropout rates, and increase graduation rates. Taking this class impacted me a substantial amount, because it made me look at how my ancestors' culture was in the past and how important it is for me to do better educationally. We need to help the youth within the community transition to a better mentality, so they do not continue to oppress themselves. Thank you again for giving me an opportunity to speak about why ethnic studies should be recommended to be implemented as a high school graduation requirement. Thank you.
Mr. Ortiz, what school do you go to?
Any questions? Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. What school do you attend?
Huh?
What school do you attend?
I was in Rosa Parks Middle School.
Thank you. Good job.
Say your name again.
Xavier Ortiz. Thank you.
Nicely done.
Good evening, School Board members. I'm grateful for your time today. I will be speaking about the effects ethnic studies has had on me, starting with me. I'm Evian Acosta, a product of ethnic studies leadership class from eighth grade at Rosa Parks, and I am currently in 11th grade at Luther Burbank. Before taking ethnic studies, I began to question my motives in life, my position in life, and my perspective on life. I felt as if I found where I came from, and now I see my world, my reality, in a different way, and question my actions. I was affected greatly by the knowledge gained in ethnic studies class, which made me more aware and conscious of many racial conflicts and stereotypes that surround and exist within our community and some minds. Ethnic studies is important, because it gives us historical roots to grow from and recognize the achievements of other ethnicities. Each young student needs these roots to understand their people's origin. All of our people contributed, and all of the people need to recognize all of our achievements to grow, knowing the culture which many of us have lost, including Caucasians, which came from Europe, and many young African-Americans that came from Africa. Thus, many students benefit from ethnic studies, because many students don't have a perspective on how it is to have a cultural identity. They are clueless about the struggle and the sacrifice of many ethnicities. Not having a cultural identity makes it hard to respect yourself and separate you from your community. This could lead to bloodshed in between all races and internalized oppression. Rather than this, we can show resilience in the community and work together to improve relations and conditions, so we can all succeed. This is why I think you should consider making ethnic studies a high school graduation requirement, and in the next upcoming weeks, there will be more of us coming.
Thank you, Mr. Imposten. Thank you.
All right, welcome.
Hello. I don't think I could top those yeah words, but I'll try. Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Yuen Turn, and I'm a Miaman American student at Sacramento State. I am here to support the Student Advisory Council for ethnic studies to be implemented into the SAC City Unified School District. Coming from Sacramento Charter High School, whose population wasn't quite diverse, I didn't get to identify much with my ethnic background. Along with this, the history classes being taught were highly revolved around Caucasians. So not only was I deprived of my ethnic community, but I was also deprived of my history. I'm a Miaman American, and most people don't even know who that is. I wanted to explain to these people who I was, but I couldn't, because I didn't know where to start, because I didn't know where my roots began. It wasn't until my freshman year at Sacramento State that I learned about my culture, my history, and other ethnic groups. I didn't even know what ethnic study was, and I find that as a huge problem. If I had been introduced to ethnic studies during my high school years, I would have been more aware of other ethnic groups, and I would have been able to be confident to tell others of who I was and what I identified with. Not only does ethnic studies touch on histories of minorities, but it also gives people a sense of who they are, just like me. This is why I am here tonight to support the Student Advisory Council. I favor the ethnic studies for high school students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turn.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda, President Wu, and the Board of Education trustees. I would first like to thank you all for having me. My name is Maria Angela Sarte. I am a second-year, first-generation college student at Sacramento State, and I proudly identify myself as a Filipino-American. And the reason I'm here is because I want to explain why I am in full support for the upcoming Student Advisory Council's Youth Movement of Ethnic Studies to be a requirement course for the Sacramento City Unified School District. Although I myself graduated from private school prior to coming to Sacramento State, I have had experience from friends that I've met who've graduated from high schools of the school district, and they explained to me how, as a minority, they felt shame in identifying themselves ethnically due to being judged and stereotyped. I was able to relate to them, because I too experienced that graduating from a private school, where I didn't want to share any part of my culture and express it due to feeling afraid of not making any friends or simply feeling accepted. I, like many of my friends who've graduated from an SD, USD high school, remain silent, because that's how I thought as an Asian-American, I was supposed to act. However, once I went to college, I took an ethnic studies course in which I learned a lot of my own ethnic heritage, as well as other ethnic groups, and I felt a sense of relief. I felt that I suddenly belonged, and I was more appreciative of where I'm from, as I learned of the struggles that my own ethnic group has gone through, just to get to where we are today, as well as understand other ethnic groups as well. I finally felt my own sense of peace, and I was no longer afraid to express myself. That's why, from my perspective as a college student, I believe that if we were to have ethnic studies as a requirement for high schools, students will be educated earlier on the importance of understanding their own ethnic backgrounds, especially because Sacramento is also very diverse. They will also show more compassion, and this may lower the stereotypes, and we may also appreciate the diversity around us. So I hope this gets passed, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our final three comments for 7.0 are from Ramon Diaz, Anna Mollander, and Grace Trujillo.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Ramon Diaz, and I'm a former Sacramento City Unified School, class of 1975, student. And during those years, I have four semesters in ethnic studies, Chicano studies, I was taught back then. And I just want to, I'm here to support and introduce a resolution for ethnic studies now, and approve a committee for this resolution. Now, you may be aware of AB Bill 101, passed for ethnic studies before California Assembly Education Committee last March, and was recently passed. And also, just recently, Woodland Joint Unified School District also passed a resolution for ethnic studies. I also brought in a printout of what was taught in ethnic studies back in Sacramento City Unified School District. And it was, I had intentions of holding a workshop at the last, such a childhood youth conference in UC Davis, but I failed to apply on time to get a workshop, but I was it. But I did go with great intentions of occupying a workshop from a non-attended facilitator. But apparently, the workshops were spread all over UC Davis campus, and I wasn't able to hold this workshop. But this has always been on my mind the past 20 years, once I had learned of the high school dropout for ethnic people. That's my two minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Good evening, President Wu and Superintendent. My name's Anna Mollander, and I'm here about an issue that I hope is proactive, something that's a little bit easy. And it came up last week. We got the notice that came out about the school year being changed for this upcoming school year. And when school years change this close to the school year, it's really difficult on families. And it's one of the ways that the district invites families to leave. All the other public schools in the area are scheduling for 2017, 2018, not for 2015, 2016. There are families that have custody issues that are going to be problematic because of this, vacation issues. We're going to lose ADA, because people just plain expect to go back to school after Labor Day. If we start adopting a calendar in advance for several years, let's do two years, people will be able to plan better, and it's better for the community. It gives us more opportunities to plan different types of engagement with the district. And just in case people aren't looking, I looked at the Google, and the Google says that Labor Day is going to be on the 7th, several more times coming up soon. So in 2020, it's going to happen again, 2026, 2037, 2043, 2048. You get my point? There's a lot of time we have, we need better planning. And it's this sort of planning and proactive, small steps that the district can take that is going to make a dramatic difference in the way the district's viewed. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mollander.
Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Banda. I always like to talk about I always like to talk about the good things that happen, and I wanted to share with my son. I know when he first started San Brandon, we had a really rough start. My son has a very colorful language, also vocabulary, so it made it very hard for his class, you know, and had lots of behaviors, and we weren't connecting with the teacher. But you know, one thing I always tell people, we need to work together and try to make things work with everything. One of the things that we start, we started doing baby steps, and one of the baby steps that we did was get him involved in art, having him, now he's in computers, as his behaviors got better, and as I got more involved in the school. It seems like now I'm going to middle school all over again, which is really fun, you know? In a sense, it's completely changed from when I went, but I was, I'm part of my son's middle school career. I call it career because for him, that's what it is, his learning the basic life and social events. I spent a lot of time at the school garden, which I created, helped the school with the teacher. I've also gone to rallies, basketball games, the dances. My son learned how to dance, which he did a lot of dancing this weekend when we went to a quinceañera, and he was telling everybody he learned it from school. Just being part of that, I think it's very important for people to recognize that each middle school out there offers different things. I know I found a good match for my son, and the same thing for those charter schools. I think people have the right to have the different charters and what fits them and their needs. I know for my son's needs, San Brandon was a good fit, and at the same time, I have to say that the principal, Dr. Rogers, and Mr. Arne have been a very good example, and I'm very proud, and people should be grateful to have such good principals and teachers in the Sacramento School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. Member Ryan, and then student member Sidle.
So yes, I wanted to speak on a couple of the items. First, I wanted to say to the youth who came out and so eloquently spoke on behalf of Ethnic Studies, thank you for having the courage to come out and speak tonight and share the importance of Ethnic Studies in your lives. What I will tell you is, I know from research that I have read that when students have access to Ethnic Studies, you see increased retention, you see increased student achievement, you see reduced, you see reduced dropout rates. I'm very proud to say that I'm on the Board of the Chicano Latino Youth Leadership Project, and we have four pillars. The first pillar is culture. The second pillar is community. The third is college, and then career. And we recognize that without teaching the youth who participate in our programs to understand their culture and connect to that identity, the strength that will come from that won't allow the development and growth academically to then seek college and see themselves as meaningly, meaningfully contributing to communities in the world. And so that's absolutely critical. One last thing I'd like to say, a few years ago, I was doing a community organizing in Fresno, and there was an epidemic of teen suicides in the Mong community. As a result of that, there was curriculum that was instituted to teach young people in the K-12 system Mong history. And what we saw was an immediate decline in suicides and a sense of pride and identity that was really rich, and I think an exemplar for what can be doing, what can be done across the state. I'd also like to comment on Ms. Mollander's statements around the calendar. I just went through the process of open enrollment with my daughter for the first time, and I was actually there as the open enrollment center was dealing with the change to the school calendar. I spoke to a couple staff who shared that, in their estimate, thousands of parents had been given incorrect information already. I knew what that meant immediately in terms of trying to correct that information for those families who already had one set calendar date in their mind. So I appreciate what Ms. Mollander is sharing. I trust that the district is going to take multiple measures to make sure that parents are notified, but I also know that that's inadequate when misinformation has been shared and when we can correct that moving forward.
Thank you, Member Ryan. Student member Sidle.
Good evening. I would just like to take a short moment to thank all the students who came out here to talk about Ethnic Studies. I'd like to thank you so much for your support. I really think it's really speaks to the, my fellow board members, when students come out here to talk about something that they're passionate about and something that they support. So I would like to thank you so much for coming out here. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
And I want to echo that, and I want to let everyone know that I was briefed by the Student Advisory Council this week earlier, and we will be, they will be presenting to the Board an Ethnic Studies curriculum or program for our consideration. So that will be on our agenda when? Second meeting in May.
And everything's been said, but I also want to just applaud you folks, young folks for coming out. Very impressed with your speaking abilities and being able to be so passionate about such an item, and know that that's something that will be taken under consideration moving forward. So thank you from Rosa Parks, from Cal State Sacramento, and any of the other schools that are represented here today. Thank you.
Moving on to the work before us, we are on item 8.0, the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Vice President Pritchard. Do I have a second? I have a second from Member Ryan. Otherwise, we'll sit here all night waiting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Before we get to item 9.0, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Wu. And I wanted to take this opportunity, before we lose too much of the crowd, too many of the crowd here, too much of the crowd, and before one of our key staff people exits, I wanted to take this moment to acknowledge someone who had a very illustrious, successful career with Sacramento City Unified School District. She retired two or three years ago after serving in the Human Resources Department and leading that department for a number of years. We had a need that we called upon her to say, hey, you know, we have a chief of Human Resources who's out of maternity leave, and we had some immense amount of work that we had to get accomplished, and staffing issues, and working with our labor partners, and asked her if she would step forward, take a step out of retirement, and come in to help us out. And I'm very proud to say and very, feel very lucky that she accepted the invitation. She came on board. She's been with us for probably a little over two months, maybe three months, maybe four months. I don't know. I kind of lost track. Four, four, she says. She's keeping track. And, and just did spectacular. You know, having someone who knew the district, had the institutional knowledge, had the relationships with labor partners, and was well-respected in our, in our school communities was a big plus for us. So I wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge Carol Minyon, who stepped forward and has just done an immense amount of work. Her last day out of retirement is tomorrow, although I think I'll be able to talk her back at some point, but it is tomorrow. And I just wanted to really publicly acknowledge her and thank her for the great work and working so collaboratively with all of us. Thank you, Carol.
Like riding a bicycle, right? You didn't forget, pick it up. You don't get another apple, though, so. Moving on to item nine, Board Workshop Strategy Plans and Other Initiatives. 9.1, Approve the Resolution Number 2835, Renewal the Charter for Ya Pe Sho Academy. Ms. Lee.
I am joined by Ed Skalar, Legal Counsel, Assisting with Charter Oversight; Lee Ya, Superintendent of Urban Charter Schools Collective; Vince Young, Principal of Ya Pe Sho Academy; Megan Lau, Business Manager Officer; and the Board of Directors of Urban Charter Schools Collective, that would be Dr. Dennis Ma, Dr. Lance Feng, and Gu Hong. Tonight, I will be presenting staff's findings and recommendations regarding the renewal of the Charter for Ya Pe Sho Academy. I'll be providing you with an overview of the following: the charter school, the charter petition review team, the minimum standard for renewal, the criteria to deny a charter renewal, and lastly, staff's findings and recommendation. As stated in the petition, Ya Pe Sho Academy's mission is to grow and nurture underserved scholars to become high-performing individuals through a brain-compatible education. YPSA is an independent charter school that currently serves about 420 students in grade levels K through 6. The charter school is located on 7555 South Land Park, which is also known as the Lisbon Elementary School Site. The charter petition for establishment was approved by the Board on March 18th, 2010, for a five-year term. YPSA is currently in its fifth year of operation, and the charter expires on June 30th of this year. A renewal petition was submitted to the district this year on February 27th, and a public hearing was conducted on March 19th of this year. YPSA's renewal application was reviewed by the District Charter Review Team. The team consisted of 13 district staff members from 11 different departments and legal Per ed code, after being in operation for four years, a charter school must meet one of four criteria before receiving a charter renewal. YPSA satisfies the minimum requirement by having a 2012 statewide rank of five and a 2013 statewide rank of five. Per ed code, the governing board may not deny a renewal petition unless it makes written factual findings setting forth specific facts to support one or more of four findings. The charter school presents an unsound educational program for students. The charter school is demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the renewal petition. The renewal petition does not contain the necessary affirmations, or the renewal petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the 16 required elements. Staff finds that YPSA meets all criteria set by law to be renewed. The charter has a sound educational program for students. The charter has demonstrated that they can successfully implement the program set forth in the renewal petition. The renewal petition contains the necessary affirmations, and the renewal petition contains reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the 16 required elements. District staff recommends that the Board adopt the resolution to approve the renewal of the Charter for Ya Pe Sho Academy for a five-year term, beginning July 1st, 2015, until June 30th, 2020. Thank you.
Mr. Ross. That concludes the staff's presentation.
Correct.
Mr. Ross, are there any public comments? Member Royal.
President Wu, thank you. I move that we approve the charter.
I will second that. We have everybody seconded, so I imagine there is no further discussion, but I'll ask anyway, is there any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, but I have Member Rodriguez first.
Thank you. It's not going to change my vote. I just want to congratulate Ya Pe Sho for their, on their renewal, and I look forward to another five years from now, although I can't possibly think of how you could overdo yourselves from what you've done the first five years. So, you know, I know I've talked to Mr. Ya before about some futuristic plans and carrying the culture and the language forward into the future. So thank you very much for all of your dedication and for allowing us to be part of your success as well.
Member Ryan.
So I just wanted to say, you know, you obviously have created something very special, and to the extent that we might be able to replicate pieces of it in other places in the district, I would love to continue to draw upon your expertise. I will tell you, most recently, what has been impressive to me is your leadership around restorative justice and how you, how you have instituted that into the fabric of all that you do within your school site. And frankly, I think that we would be well-served to do that at each campus within Sacramento City Unified School District.
Thank you. No more? Well, lastly, then, me. I congratulate you for your next five years. I look forward to working with all of you, all of you, as you bring together excellent education for our children in our community. So thank you for your efforts. That moves it. We're approved.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So I know that there are a lot of people likely to be vacating at the moment, so I'm going to call a five-minute recess so the staff can be prepared for the next item. We will reconvene at 7:26. Thank you.
Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, members of the Board. I'm happy to be here tonight with Tumua, one of our area Assistant Superintendents, and Kathy Morrison, our LCAP and CIPSA Coordinator, to present to you an update on our engagement efforts on the Local Control and Accountability Plan to date, as well as some information about the draft plan that we're presenting and will be taking out to the community for further input. Before I get started, I think that, you know, in our numerous LCAP presentations over the past, you know, year now, one of the common themes I think we've all heard from public commenters is, you know, this district is doing better than, than everyone else in the state, but here are the areas that we can do better, right? And I think, speaking on behalf of the team, you know, I think we share that, that view. We're very proud of the work that we've done, very proud of the work that our partners have, have been a part, a part of, and we realize it's far from perfect. We'll continue to improve and grow along this process. So I want to thank everyone for the ongoing support through this work. So the overview of what we're going to talk about tonight, I'll briefly recap kind of how we got here, the process last year, throughout the first year of our LCAP. Kathy will talk about the building of the draft plan, our engagement process, the work of the LCAP Advisory Committee. We have a couple Advisory Committee members who volunteered to speak tonight about the process and, and their discussions. Kathy will talk about, about the draft plan a bit and the engagement plan moving forward, and too, will speak about our public education volunteers and the community planning process, which is really sort of the hallmark of our engagement strategy. So a bit of background, I think everybody knows this by now, but as a quick refresher, LCFF, of course, signed into law at California Middle School here in Sac City Unified by the governor in 2013, really revolutionized education funding in the state of California. And the LCAP is LCFF's vehicle for transparency and engagement. It's, it's an opportunity to really engage with the, the community and our stakeholders in a much more comprehensive way around budget decisions. And while the LCAP is not the budget, it's, they're obviously very closely connected documents. LCFF calls for the inclusion of parents, including parents or legal guardians of targeted disadvantaged pupils in the planning and implementation of the LCFF, including the creation of a specific parent advisory committee. So clearly, and this is, this is taken directly from the statute, clearly, there was an expressed intent by the governor and lawmakers to make sure that engagement with our stakeholders wasn't a, wasn't a, just a nice thing to have, but a critical component of our, of each district's plan. So last year's LCAP, and I don't want to spend too much time reviewing previous years, but I think it's important to note, to sort of revisit some of the work that we did last year, because, you know, if you recall, the LCAP is a three-year plan, and so while last year, we started with a blank slate, this year, we didn't have to. We had a, a starting place. That doesn't mean that we're not making significant changes in some areas, and Kathy will talk a little bit about how this year's LCAP is different, you know, all the way from the template provided by the state to some of our processes. But, you know, we're fortunate to be able to build on the voices and input that we received during last year's process. So when we say, you know, we're starting this year with a leg up, I think that's really a testament to the, the input and the involvement of the community here in Sac City. So revising the LCAP, I'll talk a little bit about where we've been so far before we get into specifics that Kathy can talk about. We have, to date, we've had one LCAP survey, we've had two community meetings, our schools have held meetings in connection with their single, with their school site council. Our schools have held meetings in connection with their school site council, single plans for student achievement, which helped to populate and create a lot of, a significant amount of the content in the LCAP. We've created an LCAP parent advisory committee, which Kathy has facilitated, and again, you'll hear from this evening. And we've expanded the role of the district English learner advisory committee to really ensure, not only we mean the intent of the statute, but that we have a broad and diverse set of voices at the table. You've all seen this document, this page, excuse me, before as well, but again, it's an indication of, as I've said before, our and-not-or approach to engagement with regards to the LCAP. It's not about community meetings or school site engagement, or the community planning process, or an advisory committee, advisory committees. We need to be doing all of these things. We recognize that engagement looks different for different people in different neighborhoods, and we need to make sure we're giving entry points to everybody throughout this process so that everyone can have the opportunity to be involved. And with that, I will hand it over to Kathy, who will talk a little bit and more in detail about our LCAP advisory committee.
Thank you. Good evening, President Wu, board members, and Superintendent Banda. I'm Kathy Morrison. I am, as Gabe said, the LCAP and SIPSA coordinator. So, the first point of engagement I want to highlight is the LCAP advisory committee. As you know, this is the first year of this format, the board-appointed committee. Not only is the committee a great representation of our diverse community, but we have diversity of thought, which I think is really important for a community like this. When I started in this role, I knew the outcome. I knew that the committee was going to be synthesizing input from other stakeholders, helping us with reviewing the annual update, and providing comments to the superintendent on the draft plan. But I didn't know how we were going to get there. It was like starting a journey without a roadmap, and it was kind of messy in the beginning. But as you'll hear tonight, we've made great progress. The group has been working extremely hard. As the facilitator, my job is to keep the group focused, productive, and making sure every voice is heard. We began our series of meetings by providing information so that everyone on the committee would have the same knowledge base. It became apparent that our meetings didn't provide enough time for discussion, so we scheduled a half-day retreat or planning session to outline the work of the committee. And this was actually initiated by committee members, and you'll hear more about it later. Sorry, I need to advance. Okay. I think that many of you have seen the themes that the committee has identified as part of their work plan. To get to this place, they reviewed comments from district surveys and community meetings. They have been communicating with their personal and professional networks. We have asked a few volunteers to speak to the board tonight about their work on the committee. So, first, I would like to introduce Kate Woolley.
Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and board members. My name is Kate Woolley, and I'm the mother of three Sac City Unified Students. I want to thank Board Member Hanson for appointing me, and thank all of you for confirming my place on this very important committee. It has been my honor and privilege to work alongside people who care about education as much as I do. And I would like to let the board know that, in my opinion, this committee is on the right track. I believe that our three district goals, college and career-ready students, safe, clean, and healthy schools, and family and community engagement are worthy objectives and absolutely will improve our schools when this plan is implemented. I've been updating members of my community on the exciting possibilities of the LCAP. I speak with my colleagues and neighbors in the various groups that I belong to, and I've been able to listen to feedback and suggestions, which helps me refine my understanding of what our needs are in this district. I've paired up with another committee member, and we are going to reach out to the schools in Area 1 to go over the new community guide to the LCAP and walk people through our second survey. While I have a moment, I want to thank Kathy Morrison for the stellar leadership thus far. She has provided a safe and supportive environment for this committee as we collaborate and share ideas. And it's my hope that when it comes time for the board to vote on the plan, that you will give the suggestions that our committee will submit to you much consideration. Thank you.
Our next member of the committee to speak tonight is Jason Weiner.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, President Wu, members of the board, and Superintendent Banda, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I also wanted to echo the comments of Ms. Woolley, our appreciation for the opportunity to work on this, thank you for appointing all of us. And I think I speak for the group of committee members you see back here, some of whom you'll hear from in public comment as well, when I say that we not only appreciate the chance to add our voice and our expertise to the discussion, but the opportunity to learn about, more about what the district is doing and where we could contribute to that. I would only add to the presentation by saying that the four themes that we selected, school climate, after-school instruction, counselors, and looking at the benefits for specific populations under the LCAP, are areas that we worked out on our retreat together, where we worked together for half a day. And through this process, we've gotten to know each other, we've gotten to become, we've become more of a cohesive team. As we move from those themes to more specific recommendations that will be provided to you at the board and at the superintendent's office, I think that you can trust that they come from a place not only of deep concern about the district and its children, but also a place of consensus among a diverse population with a lot of expertise and knowledge about what is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, if I could take a moment, everyone present who is part of our LCAP advisory committee, please stand. So, I just want to acknowledge the hard work, the hours, weekends, nights, subcommittees. This group is definitely doing more than lip service to their task. So, thank you. And one final quick shout-out, we have one student member couldn't be here tonight. His name is Anson Sechow. He's a senior, and this is not a good time of year for seniors to be having a lot of evening activities. So, our next point of engagement was with the district English learner advisory committee, or D-LAC. And D-LAC members must also weigh in on the LCAP and provide comments to the superintendent. The difference between the LCAP advisory committee and D-LAC is that D-LAC has additional responsibilities to fulfill, and their calendar is pre-populated. They had fewer meetings and opportunities, but we made best effort to provide much of the same overview information to the D-LAC. We also provided opportunity to collaborate. One example I thought of is we scheduled an LCAP training provided by Liz Guillen of Public Advocates, and both D-LAC and the LCAP advisory committee attended. One thing we can be really proud of is the board's decision to include a stipulation that members of the LCAP advisory committee should include parents of English learners. So, we have ensured that they do have a voice at the table, and I am fortunate that two of the advisory committee members also serve on the D-LAC. So, as an aside, last week I attended a training at SCOEY where the presenter was sharing what they considered the baseline for community engagement for districts, and it was three to four stakeholder meetings a year, and that was what they were calling the PAC or the Parent Advisory Committee. So, as you can hear tonight, we've had significantly more. And I will not say that what we've done is perfect. I have that SEL growth mindset, always wanting to improve, but we have made an effort to improve on last year. So, I want to talk now about how we built the plan. As Gabe mentioned, we didn't start with a blank slate, but one of the biggest challenges is what to include in the draft. The LCAP should tell the district's story. So, we need to include the supplemental and the concentration funds, but we also need to include other programs and initiatives that support all students. We include items that are collectively bargained. And one of the more complicated things is that we include funds that are allocated to school sites. So, looking at this pie chart, 36% of LCFF funds was allocated to school sites through their SIPSA's, the Single Plan for Student Achievement. The allocation was determined based on how many students in the targeted populations attend the schools, but it's really one way we can put the local in Local Control and Accountability Plan, because the decisions are made at the school site, they are aligning their site plan goals with our district goals, but it's one way we can provide some local input to the plan. I wanted to note that the dollar figure is 9.8 million to schools and approximately 17 and a half million to district-wide. So, I'm not going to elaborate too much on the surveys. We've talked about that, but in developing, we did want to go back to the community and affirm that the goals that were established last year are still worthwhile, that they're still the goals that we want to drive the direction of the plan. And the survey was used both online and at school sites, so we felt that schools had the opportunity to inform their SIPSA's. At the community meeting, we mirrored the experience. We asked our participants about the existing goals and allowed them to vote. Here they are, our goals. What we found is, overall, about 80% through all the different venues agreed that we were on the right track with the three goals. Challenges this year is we had a new template presented from the state in January, and in some ways, it's easier because all of the information for each goal is on one page. Last year's LCAP required flipping back and forth between the metrics, the engagement, the district expenditures, the site expenditures. The drawback is it became much longer because all of Year 1 is listed, and then all of Year 2, all of Year 3. The other thing that is new is accountability means reflection and providing an annual update so that, as a district, we need to look at what we put in last year's plan and evaluate how we have fulfilled those obligations in our actions, services, and expenditures. So, moving forward, I know the document was posted, and for those of you who don't really want to read 82 pages, we have created a community guide, and this, again, is in response to feedback we heard last year that, you know, who wants to read a compliance document? So, this is written in everyday language. It will be translated. It's in process right now. This is kind of hot off the press. We've also revamped our survey so that, as we go out to the community to assess views on the LCAP, we want to make sure everything is in everyday language, it's easy to communicate, and it will be provided in languages for our community. So, moving forward, as you've heard, the committee and the D-LAC will be providing written comments to the superintendent. We will continue to share the LCAP with other stakeholders, and our public education volunteers through the community planning process will start next week. So, I need to introduce Tumua at this point. Thank you.
Hey, Kathy. Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, members of our board. First, I want to acknowledge and thank all of our community partners, but especially our LCAP advisory committee, community member leaders, for serving our schools, our children, and our district. So, thank you so much. As we know, the LCAP is a roadmap for our school district in which we need to follow and abide by to serving all of our students. And that means we need the collective efforts of every single department and every single member in this community to help us meet those needs. And so, it's my honor and privilege to have our parent engagement, family community engagement office to helping and leading the community planning process trainings for our community. As you will recall, we did utilize a community planning process last year as an additional engagement effort in gathering our stakeholders' input. The community planning process is a grassroots model used to get authentic feedback from our community, especially from the voices that are traditionally silent. The process empowers our community volunteers, who sometime is also dubbed the P-EVs, also stands for Public Education Volunteers, to engage with different folks from within their networks to having a much more authentic conversations. Our P-EVs will use, as Kathy had noted, a friendly, a everyday friendly language survey to gathering their community's input, which will immediately be captured on our web-based platform, and we use QuestionPro to capture that data. This will help us determine in real time if we are missing voices from a particular neighborhood or subgroup, and then will allow us to rally our P-EVs to make sure they have conversations with more folks that represents those subgroups. We begin, as you heard Kathy say, our P-EV trainings next week, April 29th and May 1st. We will also provide additional trainings as needed. We will also include the use of the community guide that Kathy referred to, both of which the guide and the survey will be translated in all of our languages, in our big five languages. Furthermore, as we receive community input from P-EVs, we'll be loading their input on our, as I said earlier, our web-based platform, QuestionPro, which will immediately let us know who has been engaged and whose voices is missing from the conversation, at which point, of course, we will rally, as I said earlier, our P-EVs to gather those voices that are missing. And so, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Gabe.
Thank you, Tu, and thank you, Kathy. And I think, as you can see, while there's been a lot of work done to date on this year's plan, we're hardly at the finish line. This is sort of a nice benchmark, an opportunity to let the board know where we're at, let the community know where we are, and really sort of engage in what I think is the most exciting part of this process, which is the community planning process and the P-EVs. As Tu mentioned, that process begins immediately, really beginning next week with P-EV trainings. Schools will be having a school site meeting at every one of our schools. Again, this happened last year. If you recall, the data we presented to the board last year, every single one of our schools in the district was represented in the LCAP process, which we're very proud of, and we've asked all of our principals to hold at least one meeting. And again, it's about meeting parents where they're at, going to an existing PTA meeting, an existing school site council meeting, because we know our parents are busy and have a lot on their plates. We will have one additional community meeting and then additional stakeholder engagement. As an example, we've, our Foster Youth Services Department has convened, last year convened a group of foster youth professionals, people who work in that world every day, to make sure that the voice of our foster youth is loud and clear at the table. So, that's an example of the type of engagement we're doing every single day in working with all of our partners, as Tu mentioned, to make sure that it's representative of the community we serve. Kathy and the team will be working closely with the county to get technical assistance. As you recall, they have to approve our LCAP, so we want to make sure that we're on the right track, not just from our community standpoint, but with the people who are ultimately grading the document. And then, the May revise will come out in a couple weeks, probably about two weeks. And of course, that'll shed some, as it always does, there's always a May surprise, so that that may shed some additional light on any of the funding mechanisms. You can view, obviously, all of our documents on the LCAP, on our LCAP page on the website, in addition to the community guide and the survey, the full document. the full document is there and available and is also being translated. We've, with the community guide, we're really trying to hit a sweet spot where it's detailed enough so that we're not glossing over the important pieces of the full document, but that it's accessible and short enough so that people actually want to take the time to read it. And again, the full document is also available for everybody to see. Public hearing and board adoption of the LCAP by statute will occur on the same days as the hearings and adoption of the 2015-16 budget. And with that, I will open up the questions. We're a few minutes over, but not too bad.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, Ms. Morrison, Ms. Tumua. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have six public comments. And the first three are Frank DeYoung, Sue Fang, and Angela Sutherland.
Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, board members. My name is Frank DeYoung. I'm with Hollywood Park Elementary School and I'm a LCAP committee member. And I wanted to speak tonight on the process and tell you that compared to last year, I'm pretty impressed with where we are. We're much better than we were last year. And I'd like to say Kathy has done a wonderful job with us. The committee is very demanding. We're not just in there meeting and having coffee. We're pushing pretty hard. We're asking for things. We're demanding transparency in the LCAP. We want to make sure that when people read the LCAP, it means what it means. So when you say "schoolwide," people like me will go, "Is that happening at every school?" And the answer is no. Then why isn't it saying that? And what are the schools it's happening at? Because I think for a layperson, they need to understand that. Because sometimes in the LCAP, when it says "district-wide," they think that means it's happening everywhere, and it's not. And so simple things like that, I think, can really help us a lot. And to have seventeen people that some of us know each other well, but many don't, and we become a team, and I really believe we have, is a pretty amazing thing. So I think the process we have is something we can really move forward with. I think, you know, the one thing I would ask, and I was going to ask Kathy, but I'll ask it here, is at the end of this, there should be lessons learned done. You know, here's what worked well, here's what didn't work well, so that we can take that to the next committee. And, you know, because we've learned a lot. It's been a real learning process. For most of us on this committee, I would say, every time we look at, "I didn't know that. Really? Well, then, how come we're not..." Yeah, that's where we kind of go. So I commend everybody in the process. My hat's off to the committee because they are an amazing group of people and we put in tons of hours on this. Not just on our every-other-week meetings, but we meet on our own in coffee shops and things like that to work this stuff out. So we spend a great deal of time. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and to be on this committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Ms. Fang. Not so fast now. I have slow ears.
I don't know if you can see me, so I'm...
There's a box there.
No, it's okay. My time's clicking. I've got a lot to say. Good evening, Superintendent Banda and board members. My name is Sue and I'm with Mong Innovating Politics. I'm also a current member of the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. First, I'd like to thank the Superintendent for appointing me, as well as Board Member Rodriguez for her assistance in this process. I echo all the comments that have been made around the work that we've been doing with Kathy. Within the committee, I'm part of two subcommittees, the one on the school climate and then one on the different student populations. My comments are going to be specifically around English learners. And they also, my comments also reflect April Ibada, who couldn't be here tonight, as well as Laura Rios, who's in the audience. We all know that the ability for English learners to become proficient in English is critical to their academic success. An English learner who is not reclassified by eighth grade at the latest is most likely unable to complete the A through G requirements, hence impacting their ability to access and enter into our public universities and be college-ready. In SAC Unified, there are, excuse me, there are about, there are over ten thousand English learners making up twenty-two percent of the student population. So the work that we've been doing currently is reviewing student achievement data and programs and services for English learners to give us a better understanding of the academic experiences of our English learners and to help us find the gaps in their education here in SAC Unified so that we can make informed recommendations to you as a board on this LCAP. I'd also want to note that research shows that it takes about six years to become proficient in another language. So this means that an English learner who enters in the kindergarten in SAC Unified should ideally be on the pathway to be reclassified by sixth grade. So in reviewing the LCAP update, the AMO's that, which are the Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives, have decreased. SAC Unified currently, SAC Unified currently are not, SAC Unified is currently not meeting the federal AMO targets. We have a reclassification rate of eleven point one percent. And although it's increased, it's still low. It's still too low. For example, SCOE has a reclassification of twenty percent. So I know we can do more. We're looking at data to figure out where are the gaps, where are the grade levels, are students not performing well? They're not, where they're not progressing? So that we can be able to identify you. Maybe they, maybe we need to make sure that teachers in the sixth grade and the fifth grade, maybe that's a targeted age group, but we need to make sure that they're being, they're receiving professional development in the ELD standards. We need to be able to identify our long-term English learners so that we can actually be able to provide targeted resources and instructional support for English learners. And I want to end with a comment. This is a very, very personal topic to me. As a former English learner myself, I was reclassified in the sixth grade here in SAC Unified. And I can tell you that it made a difference to my education and it gave me the opportunity to go to Berkeley. So I know that SAC Unified can do this because I got that opportunity. And then, on a last note, the D-LAC committee, and props to Kathy for her work and her efforts, but I have to tell you, myself, Laura, April, we've attended D-LAC meetings. And it is nowhere as comprehensive as what we're doing currently in this LCAP Advisory Committee. So I want to encourage the board and district staff to start planning early so that the D-LAC committee can receive the same amount of attention and emphasis on the LCAP as we provide at this committee. Thank you. I'm okay. I normally cry.
Thank you, Ms. Fang. Ms. Sutherland.
Hi, I'm Angie Sutherland. And I'm a parent. I have a daughter with special needs who attends Hollywood Park Elementary School. I reside in Area Two, but her school is Area Seven, so I feel like I've got good coverage. So I just wanted to talk about the things that have stood out to me so far being a part of the LCAP Advisory Committee. It really is a huge process. It's like a humongous, complicated puzzle. And it takes a lot of effort and a lot of time. And they're really, it's really difficult to accomplish this in such a short time. But we have a very thoughtful group. And I think we are making good progress. And just wanted to thank Kathy. She's just doing such a fantastic job helping us and supporting us. And so the things that have stood out to me are really thinking about the transparency of the plan and making sure it has all the right components, that the pots of money are going where they're supposed to be going. So analyzing the funding and the programs and ensuring equity, ensuring equity and needs of the groups that the funding is supposed to be supporting, as well as looking at other funding and what is, you know, the overall programs should be documented in the LCAP. One of the struggles is not having enough information and data and just limited resources to be able to track that down. Also, the engagement process is key to this whole, it's the whole, it's the basis of this whole process. So we really need to work on that. We had a great P-EV session the other day. And we're strategizing as a group to reach out to the different schools and community that we support. D-LAC does need better support. I think the ELAX needs better support also individually at the school sites. And then, moving forward, just thinking about the process and ways that we can maybe create frameworks for future committees so that they don't have to like reinvent all the stuff that we've struggled through and that they'll have the data that they need to begin the process. And they'll be able to begin it earlier because we started late due to the whole legislative stuff. So anyway, it's been a pleasure being a part of the committee and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
The next three speakers are Grace Trujillo, Terrence Gladney, and Darlene Anderson.
Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Banda. Again, we want to thank Kathy for being such a wonderful facilitator. I think we're all very pleased. It's a very complex task and very intense in getting all the resources in order for us as a committee to make the most appropriate decision. I agree with everything what Sue said because, again, I was an English learner. And to be identified at an early age is very important, very critical. I wouldn't be where I'm at, along with all my relatives that have their master's and their doctor's degree nowadays, you know? But they're in the same boat that we, these kids are. So that's why I am here and that's why I volunteer. My key thing is the budget. I think everybody else has an expertise in something. And my thing has always been the budget. That's why I agree with everything they say and I don't want to repeat it. But for me, the budget is very critical. Sometimes laws are passed, but there's no funding to them. And we could spend hours and hours and do all these strategies, but at the end of the day, what's going to happen? Thank you, Heda, though, for meeting with me for an hour and kind of going over the budget and talking about the different things. Since I have the area of taxation, I think we were talking about the W-2s and about all the different things that the W-2s have that some people don't understand, you know? And one of the key things that I was telling him is we're going to be getting a hundred million dollars from the LCAP. Twenty percent of it is going to be going to these unfunded liabilities. That's close to twenty-six million. That leaves you seventy-five million dollars to work with. Then you have these fixed costs that continue to go up. You're dealing another thirty million. So that brings it down, the LCAP money, you're only going to have fifty million dollars left over from the actual amount. And these are things that people need to see, the projections for five years. And this is in a good economy. This is not talking all these different variables that happen with the economy down, with the low attendance, all these different things that I need to take into consideration. I know the school only requires you to have two-year projections, but we need a five-year projection because it's a key factor for any type. I know people say we shouldn't look at it as a business, but you know what? It is. Because education is money that we need for the future. And how, I was telling somebody, it's like having a family budget and the superintendent being the daddy and the mom, the teacher is being the, 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 the teacher's being the mother and the board members being the aunts and uncles. And the ones that communicate and save their money for a rainy day are the schools that are doing better, you know? And I think today, if we all work together for the child, in this particular case, the kids are our children, you know? We have to work together. Because I know the households that have and focus on their child and not their own self-interest are the ones that succeed. So I'm asking you today, what do you think of our school district? I know we've had five different daddies in the past couple of years. So how does that easily happen in a household when that happens? Okay? With that in mind, I kind of put it in the budget where people could see the perspective of how important the budget is and how to put it at the person's level, not at a professional level. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Mr. Gladney? You have a tough one to follow.
Terrence Gladney, I'm a parent of a fifth grader Cabrillo and a junior John F. Kennedy. President Wu, Daddy Banda. And the rest of the board, obviously. I'm sure you guys know like, I'm sure you guys know the amount of resources, not only financial in terms of LCAP are tremendous in terms of what it speaks to, but the amount of resources that have been invested by stakeholders, and that's including Kathy, you know, all of our committee members. I think Frank spoke to this. We've invested a tremendous amount of time. Staff has invested a tremendous amount of time, but it still hasn't been enough. Anna Mollander came and spoke about calendaring and forecasting, doing things sort of in a, you know, proactive sort of manner. And I think that if the LCAP is truly going to be the story of the district, we need to align all those things appropriately. We had to schedule that four-hour meeting in addition to our every-other-week scheduled meetings, and it still wasn't enough time. I think that, you know, I'll share a comment that Sue made. I mean, I can't really even elaborate more deeply than she did on her personal story around English learners, but a comment that really stuck with me last night at our meeting. She said that a lot of, or she said a lot of Mong parents don't even know that their kids are English learners. And she said that that applies kind of across the board. And if that's the case, and, you know, in addition to funding the programs that we're doing at the school site, I think we really need to take a really honest look and figure out how much are we truly investing in engagement? And I mean, true engagement, I mean, if, that's like me saying, I don't know what school my son goes to or who his principal is. And I really don't now because Mr. Swice is going to be Assistant Superintendent. But I think that it's important for us to invest so that we do have authentic voice even beyond what we can see as possible. You know, I just want to say I deeply respect Anson for being a student member on a board of so many vocal and outspoken adults. And I would ask that we also invest in, beyond the Student Advisory Council, having a truly authentic voice for students. I mean, it's brave of him to come and sit amongst adults when I know he has homework. You know, he comes to meetings and I don't know that we necessarily allow him the opportunity, whether it's, you know, intended or not. I remember, you know, sometimes we do have to ask, but we also do have to make it welcoming. A lot of parents don't come to this meeting because of lack of a welcoming environment. So for him to kind of step into that domain, you know, we need to do something a little bit better for our students, you know? And I thank the Student Advisory Council and Board Member Seko for having the students from Rosa Parks come. And I hope that we as a committee and we as a district, you know, of stakeholders on both sides really do respect that student voice because students want to be challenged, they want high expectations, and they know what they want. A lot of times we sit at, you know, whether it's in meetings like this or LCAP committee meetings and we talk, but if we ask the students, a lot of times, they know. So I hope that we really do respect that student voice and make it truly reflected in the dollars and the programs that we're providing. I also wanted to just thank all of the community partners, community partners, those that have come and presented before us, but also the ones that are doing a lot of the work that we just don't have the capacity to, whether it's as a district of staff, whether it's stakeholders. You know, a lot of us represent so many different walks of life in our community. And it's a tough load for us to bring all those voices in. But there's a lot of people that even aren't on the committee. They're doing a lot of work. So I just want to thank them as well. And, you know, a lot of the recommendations that I have personally will be submitted to the rest of the committee and they'll be included in that one. So thank you, guys.
Good evening, Darlene Anderson. I guess this is my opportunity to really talk about what transparency looks like and how the district really should do outreach in the Black community. Because we all know that African-Americans are right down on the bottom with special needs students. But to reach outreach to the Black community, we don't talk to the churches anymore. And so, you know, it used to be outreach through the churches, to the Black churches, and working with the pastors to communicate to those families in those churches just the importance of education. That hasn't happened in over ten years. And so our achievement with African-American students is very, very low. I know that parents who understand the public education system can make it happen. Because I've made it happen with my two special needs kids. But I surely am terrified at the outcomes of what the minimum offer of faith is and what zero tolerance brings. Because I just recently attended an IEP where a six-year-old was placed on a minimum day. And it was one through the... And it was one through the hearing office. And then I can ask the hearing officer, well, due process, there's two different kinds. One, when you commit a crime and one when you are, have difficulty transitioning. What is the process in which those students are, you know, punished or whatever? They get the same punishment, no matter what they've done. A student who is acting out, cursing at the teacher, can have the same expulsion as a student who has smoked weed or carried a gun and moved out to an alternative program. Our children are people. This district has a responsibility to engage the black community. The LCAP says, well, engage those kids who are being suspended and expelled. They mostly look like African-Americans. What has the district done? What is targeted assistance? It's direct assistance from Title I. What is school-wide? It helps everyone. And when you talk to the people who are working to the kids who are getting targeted assistance, they do school-wide. So, they can't really tell you what they do for the kids who are Title I. We have to move all kids. We also have to demonstrate that all kids are moving forward and we have to document that the LCAP is making a difference. And right now, for the kids who has not made a difference for in the past two years, they're not making any more of a difference. So, I thank you for allowing me to come to really say that transparency is needed and we really do have to talk about the group of children who are not being successful in this district. And until we do, then transparency has not been met. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Are there any more speaker slips? Student Member Sino.
All right, just a few things. First, thank you for the presentation. It was very interesting. I don't know about LCAP or money. That's why I've always been afraid to talk about, to be honest. Which brings me to a few things I want to talk about. First, a student that's in your group in LCAP. For a student to get up in front of any more than five adults is truly terrifying, even no matter what the age is. I remember when I first came up here, for the first several months, I was terrified to speak, let alone go up and talk to anyone one-on-one. Now, I'm much more comfortable. I don't feel my heart beating in my chest. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. But it's extremely difficult and quite frankly terrifying, especially... And I do appreciate these people. I was talking to Terrence earlier and he was saying that how many people are very outspoken, very opinionated and that can be very, very intimidating for many kids. It's intimidating to me as well. Also, that I remember a while back, one of my colleagues who's my age was saying, we were at a meeting and we wanted to go out and talk to people, like, let's go be social. But she's like, well, no, I'd rather have someone approach me and tell me and ask me like, you know, how I'm doing or what my view of it is because confrontation is a big issue among students. It's very scary, even with student to student, it's terrifying. So, I do appreciate that everyone's... I feel so welcome, to be honest, with all these adults always asking me what my opinions on things is and that's great and I love that adults are doing that and I think we should do more of that. But sometimes it's hard to get a student to come out of their shell and say, hey, this is what I see is wrong. How can I help fix it? What can we do to help fix it? This is my opinion. Because not always in classes in school, we're not always asked our direct opinion, especially on my history class recently, actually. They're saying, oh, what is your opinion about the Cold War and who do you think won the Cold War? And they're saying, you never start the sentence with "I." You always say, the Cold War was won by the United States because you're not asking for our opinion, you're asking for facts, basically, all the time and you don't get to say their opinion very often. The other thing, with English language learners, I often forget about English language learners. Sometimes I will admit I feel bad about that, but English is my first language. I don't always think about it. But people bring it up to me very often. It's like, how many are we going to print? Oh, what languages? And then I remember, there are so many languages here in our district and I appreciate the fact that you're printing so many copies in so many different languages and basic languages and Mong and Spanish and how many languages are spoken in our district. And language barriers, they... Well, I don't know where to begin with that. I don't want to speak too long, I'm sorry, but there are kids in my English class who will be called on and they're so quiet and they're so... It's language is not their first language. They don't like speaking in front of the class. And then I will see them in the hallway and they were speaking Mong or Spanish like very, very quickly to their friends. And something that people I don't think always realize is that language can really block a sense of how you judge someone. It's like if they don't speak English very well, you might not think that they're very smart, but in their own language, they are far beyond my standard of thinking, but we don't always get to see that because of the language barrier.
Thank you, Member Sino. Member Rodriguez?
First, I want to thank the LCAP committee members that are here, also the ones that will watch this on either live stream or on television or recorded video for all of their dedicated work and putting their full effort into this. I haven't heard from any of the LCAP committee advisory members that no one had their heart into it. Everybody fully, fully was committed. And I know I've met with a couple of you all outside of the meetings, in the coffee shop, at parent meetings for English language learner students. And I want to thank you additionally for taking the time to meet with me and educating me about what's taking place and making sure that I could speak with a level of intelligence in terms of what you guys are all doing and the hard work that you put into it. I do want to support the statements that were made by Sue Fang. She... And that's the reason why I supported her so strongly to get onto this committee. She's representing a large population that we serve in the district that's important that we do not forget about the Southeast Asian student. You know, they're a unique population and because they have this cultural foot still, this footprint in a different country. And it's still kind of a great unknown, even more so than the Latino race because the Latino presence has been in California for quite some time, but when we're talking about the Southeast Asian, they haven't been. And so, it deserves that attention and the focus. So, I do want to thank you for representing hip, representing the culture, Sue. So, thank you very much. You know, I really, really, really want to emphasize the importance of ensuring that equity of information gets over to the D-LAC. It's almost like it was forgotten. And that you... I know you don't want to stress upon parents to make additional meetings, but this is such an important topic. And we here at the board decided that we wanted to engage and use the D-LAC for our English language learner component to this plan. But when I heard that we're not giving them equitable information as the LCAP, it concerns me. And so, we need to rectify that, you know, as quickly as possible. I know that you said you're making best efforts, but, you know, I come from a household that there's no excuses for this, you know? And so, I live my life by that. There's no excuses. We have to try better and so that we can bring that equitable force to everybody. So, I would appreciate it if you did. Reach out to D-LAC, reach out to the E-LACs personally, go out there, invite them in because sometimes, and I can tell you with the Latino culture, you have to personally invite them in because if you don't, they're like, well, you know, they sent me the invitation but it's not really for me. So, call and invite. And, you know, if you can't speak the language, have somebody else call and invite. But don't be shy. Get those people to come in. You know, it's important. It's that important. When you hear statistics like 11% versus the SCOE designation of, or redesignation of 20%, that should tell us, we should put on ourselves no excuses. It's important. We want our children to graduate A through G ready and eligible and we want them to have the choice. Not just say, well, I would have really liked to have gone, but I didn't make it. That's sad. That's really sad. And I was sitting side by side with students like that when I went to high school. You know, what made the difference between me and that student sitting next to me? I don't know. But if the same opportunity was provided to both of us, you know, then I could say, you know what? We both had equal opportunity. So, you know, I think that we want to be in that position where we're providing equal opportunity to all children. The other thing is, is I don't know if this will make you feel better, but, you know, in terms of outreach and getting your message out and touching and engaging communities. I work for a faith-based community and their mission too is also to, you know, engage and promote, get the community to come in and be welcoming as well to all ethnic backgrounds. And I can tell you, it just doesn't exist with one faith or another. They're all having that struggle right now as well. So, you know, everyone's looking for the answer. Everyone's looking for, how do we engage more people? But when I see the first survey of three, only 300 or a little bit more than 300 respondents, it does bring a level of concern to me. What are we doing? You know, how can we do it better? Who do we need to engage? Do you need to engage board members? Do you need to sit down with us? Do you need to have a phone conversation with us and say, hey, we see that we only got 300, so how do we, how can we improve this? So, use your resources up here. Keep in mind, I keep saying this over and over, we ran for office, we were boots on the ground in this community. I can tell you, big shout-out to Ms. Anderson, who has actually worked on a couple of my campaigns and I know she works hard. She will walk neighborhoods like anybody's business and knock door-to-door and give them flyers and talk to them. And, you know, you need to take advantage of people like that and get them engaged and get them to call the community in because that's a neighbor person calling them in, right? It's not us. It's the one that lives in the neighborhood and that's what we need to have. And I know you're going to say P-E-Bs, right? It's just that I want to touch that too. Because for this process, we should have had the P-E-Bs engaged at the very beginning, all the way along for, you know, to get them into, hey, we're having these community meetings and get those, get the word out to the community. Because some of these meetings were not well-attended, right? I mean, we have to admit what we have, what we know. They weren't well-attended. So, we have to understand that P-E-Bs get engaged at the very beginning. How many P-E-Bs do we have right now in the district, as a district-wide?
About two, do you know the answer?
100 for a population of 43,000 students. I mean, we have to really look at statistically, getting a number that's statistically significant. How many reasonably do we have to have in order to cover? I mean, these are the things that, you know, we set goals, we see those numbers and we set goals and say, okay, we need to work on that. We need to work on this. We need to get this engagement. We need to get these guys up here engaged. You know, we need to get those people who come and make public comment that they want to be engaged and they're saying it. We need to engage more African-American children and African-American families. We need to engage more Mong. We're hearing it, but what are we doing with it? So, those are my comments and thank you for answering about the P-E-Bs. But I really do want to see some progress on the D-LAC and getting them engaged now so that we can have them, you know, we need to ramp them up so that we can have that solid recommendation coming forward. Okay? Thank you.
Member Ryan?
So, I'll try to avoid echoing too many of Member Rodriguez's comments. Many of them were excellent. I do want to, however, just thank the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee for their service. I think it's extremely important to recognize that you have families and you have tremendous obligations and the fact that you've gone above and beyond the call of duty and held meetings outside of your regularly scheduled meetings so that you would emerge a more cohesive unit and have developed, you know, letters that you've permitted, that you've submitted to the board for consideration that are incredibly well-thought-out, does not go unnoticed by each of us, so thank you. And I'd also like to thank the staff for their work because I know this is uncharted territory to a certain extent. I do want to touch upon what Terrence Gladney said around creating a welcoming environment and how often families are not going to be meaningfully or authentically engaged if they're intimidated by where the LCAP Advisory Committee or the LCAP community meetings are taking place. I've had an opportunity to participate in a few now and I will tell you, the difference in energy level from the LCAP Advisory Committee meeting, or, sorry, the LCAP community meeting that was held at the CERNET Center to the energy level that was seen at the La Familia event that was done in December was notable to me. So, the difference is, and I'll just point out a few things, you know, a ratio that was disproportionate at the CERNET Center of staff to actual family and parents. At the La Familia event, you know, clearly heavy on not the usual stakeholders, but true families, right? And that energy was remarkable to me and exciting and I think should be what we aspire to moving forward. Then I just want to point out, you know, thank you, Sue, for your beautiful and very real story. I think the reclassification of English language learners is frankly a civil rights issue and we need to focus on it in a meaningful way as part of this process. And then finally, I know that each of the board members received a very well-drafted letter that was put together from members of the Parent Advisory Committee asking us to focus on four priority recommendation areas. Those priority areas means school climate, after-school programs, counselors and those counselors looking at both college and social workers, and then underserved populations. And I think many of you have spoken to that today. And I would just say to the board members, you know, for me, moving forward, not only do I think that those focuses and ensuring that they are met and the drafting of the LCAP plan is right on, but I also think that we have to do, you know, do service to the hard work of the Parent Advisory Committee by saying that we are going to seriously weigh those recommendations and incorporate them into the work that we do moving forward because frankly, I would hate to see all of your efforts be in vain. And I think that the bar we're setting now is going to be the bar that is either going to bring in many families moving forward or turn them away because they don't feel like their voices were truly heard.
If I can just respond, I'm sure there's more comments for responding to Member Ryan and Member Rodriguez a bit. I think, you know, as I've said before, for this process, it's a marathon, not a sprint. So, and I want to, I want to wholeheartedly agree, Member Ryan, around the different levels of energy when you go to an LCAP Advisory Committee meeting or a meeting at CERNET Center or a meeting at a school site at a PTA meeting or a one-on-one meeting with a public education volunteer and one of his or her neighbors or colleagues. And that's why, you know, we've constantly said to the process that there has to be entry points for everybody, right? The most authentic engagement, I believe, and I think the team believes, is happening not here, not in this building, at school sites every single day, in people's personal networks. And that's why, and I know Member Rodriguez sort of teased me about, she knows I was going to say the P-E-B process, but it's because it's the anchor of our strategy because it's the most authentic approach we have in really engaging all of our stakeholders. We know it's a heavy lift, right? The PPIC, you may have seen, just released a poll today that said statewide, 66% or 62% somewhere in the neighborhood of parents still don't feel they have enough information about the Common Core. The Common Core has been a part of our vernacular statewide and nationwide for years. There's been public information campaigns and you can roll off all the things that we've seen and yet, 2/3 of parents in the state of California don't feel they know enough about it. So, I think it underscores the scope of, you know, the work to some degree and that's not to say that we can't and don't need to do better because, of course, we always do. But I am extremely confident in the plan that we've laid out. It's really modeled after the plan that we used last year that received lads around the state for being leaders with regards to engagement on the LCAP. LCAP. Member Rodriguez, to your point around the smaller survey, if you recall, last year we had two surveys, right? We had the first survey, which was the P-E-V process, which generated about 1,300 responses or so. We had a second survey, which was more detailed around the draft LCAP itself, which netted only a couple hundred responses because it was so dense with content. And what we heard from stakeholders and feedback during the process and into this year was, people wanted to see the document. The 1,300 people gave us great feedback for year one, where we were really talking about big picture, what are our goals? How do we create this vision for the district? But now that we have a document to look at, it's a rather disingenuous to ask for input on a document that, that they don't have in front of them and they can't weigh in on. So that's why we've really focused, and that's why the P-E-V process, to your question, is later this year. That's why we're tailoring it around the draft plan. And we've spent a lot of energy in creating this community guide, so that we've got a draft plan that is accessible. I think that the Advisory Committee saw the community guide last night, and I'd love to get their feedback on it. And I know that Kathy had some discussions around it with them last night. But I think, you know, is the, is the approach perfect? No. I mean, we'll continue to grow and get better. But I'm confident that, that when the marathon is done, at the end, at the end of, in June, when the board's voting to approve the LCAP, that you're going to be proud of the, of the work and engagement we've done in this process. And then the last piece regarding EL, I think, again, you know, I'm not going to be able to add anything more poignant than, than what Sue spoke about or any, or any of, you know, our speakers or board members' personal experiences. And I'm sure if Dr. Roberts, who's out, who's out sick this evening, were here, she could speak a little bit about the reclassification data and sort of the work that we're doing with EL students and training teachers to better support EL students, which is critical, I know, to her department's work. But I want to just assure you that, that we have not forgotten the D-LAC. We, you know, came in midstream with the D-LAC, with the E-LAC in this process. Again, we continue to grow and improve. Last year, if you recall, we didn't have an advisory committee at all. This year, I think the board, as Kathy mentioned, the board wisely chose to make sure that the advisory committee was representative, not just of parents in general, but specifically of parents of all of our subgroups, including EL parents, or EL representation. I think to some degree where we can be the victim of our own success a bit, in that the LCAP Advisory Committee has gone so above and beyond what every other group in the state is doing, which is something we should be extraordinarily proud of, that we set a high bar for ourselves with the D-LAC, which is a good problem to have. And it's a bar I'm confident that will meet and exceed in the future. But again, I would continue to urge or ask for our sort of collective patience as we grow and learn this process together. You know, I think, and some of our speakers said, I think Frank mentioned that, that we're a much better place today than we were this time last year. And we'll be in a much better place a year from now than we are today. And we'll continue to grow and improve. So I thank you for all the comments and feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And I just want to say thank you to our staff, our team, but in particular, really from the bottom of my heart, to thank members of our, of our parents and our, and really our community people, because you guys are really, really doing hard work. And we really appreciate it. In spite, you know, in spite of the comments that my colleagues have, I recognize that we are leaps and bounds ahead of many other school districts. I go around through the California School Board Association, and I talk to other school districts. I know we are really doing superior work, and people are just amazed at the work they're doing. And I know it's not perfect, and I recognize that each year we will get better and better and better. And I'm sure that we will hit perfection someday. And someday will be sooner rather than later. And I don't hold out the possibility that we will be put out there as the model for the state of California. So again, I really appreciate everybody's efforts, and thank you for your efforts, and thank you for the, for the update.
Thank you. And the board members are welcome to participate in the P-E-V training. I'm sure the family and community engagement staff would love to train each and every one of you, too. Member Rodriguez's comments, we'd love to capitalize on your, on your networks and relationships. So please, you know, we'll send the information to you, and I would love to get you trained and get you on that on the streets.
Thank you.
I just want to speak to that real quick. I'm not sure if you're aware of this. I am taking a class out of town at USC. So I do not have any room in my schedule to be P-A-V. I would, I would love it. But I would welcome a phone call or a meeting with you all, and I will give you my contacts, and you could, you know, work through them. That would be the balance and the trade-off, too, instead of me coming to the training, because I really can't, you know, can't just fit another thing in. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
If you can't, I would send your, my fan club, if they finished their homework. Okay, moving on. Item 9.3, approved resolution number 2830, authorizing the issuance and negotiated sale of SCUSD general obligation bonds, Measure Q, election of 2012, and 2015 Series C in an amount not to exceed $90 million, and related documents and actions. Your Honor.
Okay, please allow taller than me. Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, members of the board. At the last board meeting on April 9, we present to you the first reading to sell $90 million, so Measure Q. There are not, there are no changes to the presentation. Mr. Jeff Smalls from Capital Public Finance will summarize the presentation that you heard last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rorado. I'm also here with Bruce Kearns, Managing Director of Stifel Nichols. Thank you very much, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, members of the board. Very pleased to report that our bond issue is on schedule. It's unchanged in any way, and we are moving forward. We are recommending that the board approve a resolution that will authorize the issuance of the $90 million worth of general obligation bonds paid by taxpayers that was brought to you as an information item on April 9. On April 9, we spent some time detailing the structure of the bonds and the cost of bonds. I'm pleased to report that we are, we are within budget. The resolution does approve certain documents in form, a paying agent agreement, which prescribes the terms of the bonds, and a preliminary official statement or offering document that's given to investors that describes the bonds to be sold, as well as a continuing disclosure certificate, which identifies certain responsibilities that the district has to communicate information to investors in the future, and a bond purchase agreement with Bruce's firm. So with that, happy to answer any additional questions about the issue that you might have.
Thank you. I see no questions from my colleagues. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item 9.4, approved dual enrollment resolution number 2833, Support for College and Career Access Pathways Act Assembly Bill Number 288. Superintendent?
Thank you very much, President Wu, and board members. This is a resolution to approve dual enrollment, and it's also support for the College and Career Access Pathways Act Assembly Bill that was just mentioned. I just want to highlight a few things on this. It's really, the dual enrollment is viewed as a viable and effective method to prepare any student, even one who may have struggled academically and who may have had no initial interest in pursuing post-secondary degree or credential, to complete high school and be able to enter into college. It's really about allowing greater, more diverse segment of high school students to take on some community college courses while still enrolled in high school. And it facilitates establishment of those dual enrollment partnerships, which are so key. And I know here in Sacramento, we have worked really hard to develop partnerships with higher ed partners. This particular bill and this act would make it possible to expand the college and career pathway opportunities for all of our students here, which is in line with what we've always had as one of our big goals. And that is to make sure every student's prepared for college, career, and for life. And then lastly, the dual enrollment partnership is viewed as a strategy to provide critical support for underachieving students, specifically those students from groups that are underrepresented in higher education. So I ask that our board approve the resolution in support of dual enrollment.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Rodriguez?
Thank you, President Wu. I am extremely thrilled about this resolution. And I don't know if many of you here recall, I've been talking about dual enrollment for years now. So when it comes time to move this, or I could do it now, I moved the approval of Resolution 2833. I hope that many of you up here will join me.
And I have a motion, and I have a second. Member Ryan?
So I have been following failed dual enrollment legislative initiatives for about 10 years now. And I have to tell you, I'm incredibly excited about this. Obviously, there is tremendous value to allowing a student to take courses at a community college while they're in high school. You know, it's a very cost-effective way to boost student achievement. And frankly, for many students who don't necessarily feel compelled to stay in school, it can be that guiding light that keeps them on track. I will say, I've had an opportunity to speak with Chancellor King about this, and feel like we're not only positioned to support legislation that would pass for the benefit of students statewide, but to engage in a meaningful partnership in Sacramento with Los Rios Community College District. So I strongly support our weighing in on this, and I'm happy that Superintendent Banda brought this to the board.
I, too, want to echo that sentiment. And I, too, am a product of dual enrollment here in Sacramento High School as well, at the same time being enrolled at Los Rios Sac City Unified, I mean, Sac City College. So I have no more indication for speaking, so I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Superintendent. Item 10.0, Business and Financial Information Reports. 10.1, Head Start, Early Head Start Reports Received. Item 11, Future Board Meetings, May 7, 2015, 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open. May 21, 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session, both meetings here at the CERNAS Center. So, item number 12, we are only four minutes behind. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn. I have a second from Vice President Princhet. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.